To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Warrants and bills have been signed. Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. We have minutes to approve today?
They were in with the bills.
Why don't we hold off on that until the next meeting, okay? County Administrator's Weekly Update.
All right. Just a few things this week. First is the notable events from the Sheriff's Department from October. On October 7th, there was an incident on Gauding Road where a vehicle went off the road and struck a tree. Looks like a minor leg injury and they were transported. On October 9th, they arrested an individual in Shapley for a couple of outstanding warrants. October 10th, there were four subjects involved with the theft of the Welcome to Maine signs located on 109.
They stole the signs?
They stole the signs. Have not gotten them back, but they have a very good description of the vehicle. On the 12th, the deputies were dispatched to a home in Shapley for a missing person. They were concerned about someone's welfare due to a domestic violence and they are just indicating that she is safe. On October 15th, they responded to a home on Silver Lake Road and found an unattended death of an individual from Florida. October 15th, they responded to Shapley Corner Road for a car crash into a ditch that blocked a driveway and it appears that said driver was intoxicated. October 19th, Sheriff's Department received its Maine Law Enforcement Accreditation Award. On October 19th, deputies investigated theft of catalytic converters from a business on Emery Mills. They do have a truck and they included a picture. I emailed this to you of what they're looking for. 24th of October, Deputy Sanborn attempted to stop a vehicle on Route 109, Youngs Ridge Road. No inspection sticker, had some other issues. It's like a small high-speed chase and then eventually the vehicle crashed onto San Pedro and fled on foot. October 26th, the Sheriff's Department responded to a home on Royal Coachment Way in Shapley for a burglary in progress. The, it looks like the house had been forcibly entered, but by the time they got there, the suspect was gone. Shows that a refrigerator was stolen from the home. Couldn't have gotten far.
That was on a lake, wasn't it?
Yeah. And a washer and dryer. Okay. 10:31, yeah. 10:31 is just a notation that the sheriff himself, along with two or three individuals, attended the trunk or treat in Acton, excuse me, and how well it was attended. That's the good news from the Sheriff's Department.
The status of the contract?
That was the good news of the Sheriff's Department. So I'm not going to go through this line by line with you, but I'm going to tell you I sent you an email from the county manager and he indicated that he and the sheriff reviewed the changes that Acton and Shapley presented and they were quote "not acceptable." Michelle and I spent a good hour on the phone today going through what we proposed and what they accepted and it was nothing. Every proposal that we went in there, we went forward with, they declined. They changed it. I mean, we put in, let me give you a couple of examples so you can remember. So you guys had said that you wanted, if he was out, you wanted training and other coverage received will be equal to the coverage provided in the contract. They removed that. The reports that we requested for the vehicle and what it was doing outside of Acton, Shapley hours, they took out, they said no. We put that we would, that we would actually pay York County for the services under the contract. It was actually worked on based on actual salary, benefits and expenses. They said no. I mean, they said no on every one of them.
What about the one where if they backed out of the contract?
No.
Yeah, they said no, the same thing.
They said that, yeah, you will pay, but they, yeah, there's, I mean...
No repercussions if they back out of us.
And they changed it from a three-year to a one-year contract.
That's good.
So...
Excuse me. We'll open up for general comments.
So there are a lot without going through all of it, but what we're going to do because we just got this, I'm going to, we'll show you in a document, you know, what was requested and then what their response was because, you know, in some of them, they just cut the sentence right off. One section, H, that we put in there, that one of the attorneys put in, that York County shall provide the town with written responses to citizen inquiries and complaints which are directed to the Sheriff's Department when appropriate. Such responses shall be under the sheriff's signature and provided to the resident within 30 days of filing the request. They just deleted the entire paragraph, so.
So what's the next step?
So next step is I'm going to put it in a Word document. We just got it. Put it in a Word document, show you what you requested and what they're said, what they said, and call a meeting with Shapley. Figure out what we want to do next. I mean, they're not making any budgets.
Yeah, we're kind of stuck in a real toughie here because, you know, we met with Shapley. These are our concerns we had and pretty much what York County is saying is whatever, we don't agree with what we want. We can't really sign that contract the way it is right now because we've just given up everything we asked for.
What's, when's, when's the current contract expire?
December 31st.
Wow, we got to get meeting with Shapley quickly.
Yep. And remember, we sent, you know, we sent this to Legal as well. And Legal put a couple of, a couple of items in, but...
Do, we have other towns that have contracts with the sheriff?
Yes.
Have we ever looked at their contracts?
Yes.
And is it the standard contract offered by the sheriff? None of them have modified it?
They won't, I have spoken to a few towns and they've asked not to, you know, we don't want to say too much about them. They won't take, they won't take their proposed changes either.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're in a different situation than, say, like Waterboro.
Oh, this is, I'm not, I'm sorry David, I didn't mean to interrupt, but this was just, this will just, our attorney put this in under termination. Furthermore, the contract will automatically terminate in the event of non-appropriation of funds by the town meeting, which couldn't be any clearer. I mean, if the townspeople don't, so he put that in there to cover yours, cover the clause. They took it out.
So they expect payment to be made?
They, yeah, and that's what it says. It will, yes. So...
Well, let's meet with Shapley and figure out what we're going to do with this. Some of these things, it seems to me we have to have and maybe some of them can be negotiated, but we'll have to see.
I believe we have to cover ourselves so we don't have the same situation we did last time.
Well, at least something like the funding, yeah. I mean, at least the funding. I don't know how you can take that line out. If the voters say no, then it's not an option. Nobody gets to trump that.
But don't we have an option to terminate the contract?
Yeah, well, it expires in December, so you haven't resigned it.
If we signed the contract as they presented, do we have an option to terminate at any time with some notice?
With some notice, but they've added some clauses.
Effectively...
They've added some clauses.
Oh, okay. We'd want to look at that. If the town failed to appropriate money, could we give notice and terminate the contract because we don't have funds?
But I think just by them pulling that out of there, where does it benefit them to do that? We don't have the money, we don't have the money put forward, we don't have the money put forward.
One that I know we spent a lot of time on and Shapley was real concerned with was that under a standard of performance, it said that, provided however, that, talking about the nature of services and the conduct of the deputy business performed under this contract, we added that, provided however, that York County shall make the final determination, we added the words, "on personnel and law enforcement issues," meaning other things that, you know, you would have a say in. And they removed that out and said the county shall make all decisions.
Let's meet with them and we'll take them there.
Do you want to meet with just Shapley or you want, am I bringing the Sheriff's Department in too?
I'll Shapley first.
Where this involves a contract negotiation. I, now maybe we can't do this. Can this be done in executive session?
I'll have to double...
You don't want to broadcast.
Right. Which is what happened last time. It was filmed and...
It gets broadcast and you're broadcasting your negotiating position, which is not...
I'll double check with Brad. I'll double check with Brad.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, fine. Double check on that. Speaking of, while we're still on the law enforcement, whatever happened to that, that radar?
They are trying to see if they can find the pieces. So I gave them instructions on where it was located because it's at the fire station. They're working on a quote to go over and look at it.
Okay. Who's "they"?
The company. Remember I told you the Sheriff's Department gave us a company that redid them?
Great. Thank you.
Next was just information to let you know that the road committee is going to be meeting with a bridge ranger next week. It looks like they're meeting on Monday, the 21st at 10:00 a.m. They're going to meet here at the town hall. I did ask, David had me ask for an itinerary and she did reply today saying that itinerary will be set when they meet. So it sounds like it's not done yet. And we are going to send cable along to get the information.
And the purpose of this is to get the advice of a, is it a road and bridge ranger?
I'm not that, I don't know. Will, you want to speak? You were at the meeting.
Mr. Foster.
I'm not familiar with this position.
Ranger, yeah.
Ranger, yeah.
Yeah, the gentleman that's coming down, I believe he's, he goes around the town and just gives like his opinion on, you know, bridges and culverts and kind of can guide you in the right, right way of replacement or...
Is that different than the yearly bridge reports that we get?
He works with those people, but he's like, you know, it's kind of like a free, yeah, he's kind of like a free thing. He can come out, try to point you in the right direction, stuff like that.
Are you and Adam going to be there?
I told Leslie I'll be there. I don't know, I'm assuming Adam will be there, but I don't know.
So what bridges do you think you'll be looking at?
I know they want to go to West Shore Drive. That was one and I believe...
What are they going to West Shore Drive for?
I don't, that's what, I'm assuming this might be one of them.
I don't know why you would do that.
Well, that's why I want to see the itinerary because if, send that bridge ranger over to something we're having engineered and haven't done, just kind of sounds pointless to me.
Yeah, I don't, I know our last meeting with Leslie, I mean, yeah, Leslie's going to try to get ahold of him, so I don't know. And the only other one I could think we could go to is the one on the hopper.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I was hoping that's what it was all about, but it said bridges.
Yeah, so I don't know. I didn't think they were going to get really ahold of him. I mean, he hasn't called her back before, so I didn't think they were going to get ahold of him now, so.
But you saw the email, it's all scheduled, yeah.
That's all I know is that...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I really have...
I mean, we don't have to go over there. I mean, it's not...
Well, no, no, I just, well, it doesn't, I don't know what it's going to accomplish by having somebody come down where we've already got engineers and everybody working on it.
Maybe he doesn't, I don't know if he was filled in with that.
I just, I asked this question and it's not nothing to you, but whether or not this, this is something being done because of a recommendation we may have made.
I don't know.
Okay. Because I only know of one bridge that the town of Acton has got that needs any work that I know of. It should be the only one you guys are discussing at this point.
Right, I think that was going to be the next step, so maybe that's, maybe that's all we're going to. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, I did watch the, watch the meeting and they didn't indicate any specific bridges or culverts in the meeting.
So you're going to follow up with Leslie on that? Okay. Anything else, Jennifer?
Yep, a couple of things. We have this, remember the Sheriff's Department and AAA scheduled this Keeping the Keys, indicated for our older drivers on November 30th at 1:00. We're close to canceling it. At this point, no one seems to be interested in being reminded of how to drive. But, so if you want to sign up for it, let me know. Shapley, I think, has one person interested so far. And then last is just a plug to our Thanksgiving dinner on Thursday. We have over 50 people that have been so far. They seem to be very excited about it, yeah. So we just sent out a handful of personal invitations of people we thought might not stay on social media, so. So excited for that. That's all.
You got enough food for all 50 people?
Don't forget your pie.
I, I, yes. Two.
Yes. Yes. The town, as always, is coming together phenomenally.
That's great. Thank you. Anything, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Great. Department head, committee chair, I understand, Wayne?
Good evening. Wayneham Fire Chief. Just a couple of updates. Put together with my promotion up to the rank of Fire Chief, left vacancy that I was holding currently. So I put together a posting. Those that had the qualifications internally came to my office, letters of intent. And selected Adam Small, which he was a captain currently with the department, has grown up here in town, lives in town, built a house in town, to the number two. He'll be my right-hand man assisting me with the operations over there. With Rick stepping down from the chief's position, under Rick and I, when Rick was the chief, we had another deputy chief's position that was not filled because we didn't have qualified candidate. So I filled that with Rick as a deputy chief to help with operations. He'll kind of be in the background for all the questions I have. I bother him on a daily basis. He'll just be another layer of contact when Adam and I are not available. He'll be next up, so.
Adam is now what?
Deputy Fire Chief. And Rick is a deputy Fire Chief.
So you have two deputies.
Yeah, which we always have had.
You flip a lot of positions.
Yeah, which we have always had, those two deputy chief positions. We just didn't have qualified candidate until Rick stepped down to fill that position.
So those appointments have been made?
I have made them internally, yes. I'm assuming, I don't know, I'm assuming we'll probably have to do an appointment for them in the event that I'm not available. I believe that's how we've done it in the past.
Yeah, the board has always assigned appointments.
Yes. So is that going to be coming for us to...
At the next agenda, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right.
And the last update I have, which I'm sure everybody's going to love, tank truck update. Tentatively scheduled, I'm waiting on final travel plans, but it's tentatively scheduled for Adam and I to go to the factory to do the final inspection at the factory before they release it to the dealer. So that is November 30th, December 1st timeframe.
Where's the factory?
South Dakota. I couldn't tell you the town name. It's in South Dakota.
So you guys have to fly out there?
Isn't that where the last one came from?
No. Greenwood would have been Florida. They have two different factories, Florida and somewhere else, but it's in South Dakota. The manufacturer pays all travel expenses, all that stuff, so nothing to us. We just have to go out there and stamp it to make sure it's everything that we asked for in the specs and it meets our standards moving forward. It gets released from them pending any major changes. He couldn't give me a timeframe because it all hinges on the final inspection, so I'm going to be optimistic and say, hey, I'm shooting for January 1st with that truck being in town.
That'd be cool.
So, but that all hinges on the final inspection process, so.
Now, do you guys have to bring it home or are they going to have it delivered?
They're having it, they're going to deliver everything. So it's going to go from the factory in South Dakota to the dealership in Plainville, Massachusetts, which is where the dealer is out of. They do their thing. They do some more testing on it to, because it's going through testing right now from UL and all that stuff, but then they, they do their own testing as well to ensure nothing happened between transport. And then they'll drive it up to us and we'll take possession of it.
Are you decommissioning a truck when this comes online?
It's already been decommissioned. Two years, when we put the order...
Oh, really? So you've been operating one, one short?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Truck is gone.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, not for me.
That's all I got.
Thank you. No, that's great.
Thank you very much. Dennis?
Dennis Long, Chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee. We had a warrant finance committee meeting last night and with a motion invoked by the Warrant Finance Committee last night, we wanted to ask the slutman to think about, if you decide to have an open town meeting, to think about changing the June meeting to a March or April meeting to try to coordinate with the school. And we realized that on the municipal end, we'd probably have to, you would have to back up a little bit on the budget process, maybe a couple of weeks earlier, to be able to accomplish that. So that was some of our conversation and recommendation from the warrant finance last night. And the other thing, Tom, I'd like to set up a time to meet with you, to go over some of the financial information that we want, are going to be wanting and, and some of the stuff we received.
Love to hear about it.
Okay, thank you.
While we're on this subject, I just wanted to, you have not yet received the financial statements?
Yes, we got some, yes.
He got expenditures that he asked for from July to October.
We do not, we have not received the audited statements.
Right. I appreciate that.
They have not been received. The town has received, excuse me, the school has received theirs and theirs was dated, the date's not popping out, but they've had it for, I think, the end of, first of September.
September, yeah.
They got theirs. The town has not yet received ours and we've been communicating with the audit partner, weekly, if not more frequently, trying to get these statements done. As you recall with the RFP that we did last year, we reached out to a number of audit firms that had a history of doing work in municipals. And we, I couldn't get another firm to actually submit a bid. So we're down to RH Smith. Has, appears the only firm that is doing business in what I think is the southern part of the state. What the southern part is, I'm not quite sure. We're trying to, I asked the school to send out on its listserv to financial managers they have to find out what, what firms are being used by other towns, but it appears it's just one firm.
I explained that last night, Tom, that the slutman had solicited other auditors and the night of the interview when you had two, one withdrew and that the slutmen were working at their best to get this done. And we don't really know when we'll have it.
The treasurer has not been able to get information normally provided by the auditors that would allow us to, we're not in a position where we can start the budget process.
Right.
Our general ledger is not in a shape where it can, it can start putting out reports that would allow us to develop the budget. That's a concern for me. I've looked at the school's financial statements and they in fact had a rather healthy surplus. And they were scheduled to draw almost $800,000 from their reserves. And they only had to draw 310. So there's about a $500,000 less draw than had been expected, which I consider to be a surplus, which is great news. And they'll be providing us some explanation on exactly where that, how that was generated, what, what lines, revenue lines or expense lines were off in budget and for what reasons. I, I still can't tell you how the town has done.
Right.
I, I, we got a projection back in February or March at that time and I think it was like 300 and somewhat thousand dollars, as I recall. I've kind of looked through the general ledger and it looks like it might be a little under $400,000, but please don't hold me to that. That is the problem I have is that we're still now November 15th and we don't know how we ended up the prior year. And if we lose that audit firm, we will be in a position where we may not be able to get audited financial statements. We may not be able to determine where we are at any point in time. So I think it's a real risk to the town. I just, I felt like I needed to disclose that. We're doing everything we can to rectify it, but it's, it's a concern for me. I just wanted to share that.
That's also going to be an issue there if we decide to move uptown meeting in April.
Absolutely.
Because that's going to make it, we don't have our financials in order yet. And so it may be a little early to do that. Not necessarily until we get everything lined up.
We would like, once we get the financials and can start the budget process, we need to put together a budget calendar that will make clear what needs to be on and what sequence, what role the warrant finance committee plays, the department heads, et cetera. We need to sort of map that out in a schedule. Once we've done that, we can then be in a better position to respond to your vote about whether or not that's even possible to think about this year. If it, if it is, I think we'd want to talk about that, but it, it may not be possible. So we'll do our best.
I appreciate that and I know the slutmen will do their best to try to make a recommendation happen. Thank you.
Any, while I'm on that, any questions about that? I guess we're all set. Okay. Any other department head, chair updates?
Will Langley, District 1. We didn't have a meeting last week, but we got all of our paving finished up last Wednesday. They finished up West Shore Drive and they went back up to Youngs Ridge for Adam. So everything just got a binder, of course, for right now, then they'll be back in the spring to put the surface on and then we'll shoulder everything in the springtime. So that's where we're at right now.
Time is everything, huh? You made it just before...
Yeah, no, we...
Weather turned cold.
Yeah, we had some hiccups with paving company. They've had a, I think, just too much work and not enough people. So the gentleman that we've been dealing with really, really pulled through for us because they wanted to push it right off till springtime and we just, we didn't think that was fair to the people, so they, they really pulled through for us, so.
All the driveways are all shut up and possible...
Yeah, we finished those today on West Shore Drive. There are like three or four left, so.
Worried about the spring washing out the sides for the shoulders?
No, I'm not, no. I mean, most of them, there's really not, nothing there. When they graded, they're pretty, you know, if there's any little berm, it's not much, so. We'll keep an eye on it, but we should be all set till springtime, you know.
I think Adam would probably have the rest up there on Youngs Ridge on that hill there.
Yeah, I'd say so. Yeah, I think he said he's going to go up there and put some gravel in some spots, you know, try to help it, but that's it.
Thank you, Will. Anyone else? Okay. Liaison updates. I really don't have anything to report. David to Kim?
I do with the rec committee. Jennifer had let me know that, is it DOT called? They had gotten the application for the driveway, but they had some questions. So the questions were answered and hopefully soon enough we'll have a permit, so. And that's, that's it for me.
Okay. Road committee update, I guess they're having their little bridge ranger doing his thing there. Code enforcement, we've got a couple more interviews to do for the land use secretary. Mary Grant, I don't have anything. Conservation Forest, we have sent the job description to our forester.
And the whole committee?
And the whole committee. And the whole committee. And I guess our forest has made a couple of changes, so we'll get those back. There's a meeting on the 12th, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And we're going to discuss it then.
Hey, any comment? Okay. Old business. West Shore Drive, culvert?
Yep. So I had a Zoom meeting of Jen and Maureen from Ransom. We had a Zoom meeting and we've, I've instructed her to, to move forward with the engineering, to do away with the gabion baskets, to come up with some sort of a better solution and put it together so we can get an RFP out, get some bids on the replacement of the culvert. So she's going to deal with the Army Corps and DEP and everybody that needs to be dealt with and the burdens and all that. So she, what she's saying, it's going to be probably a month and a half or so.
Yeah, she said once she got this letter, yeah.
You know, but she, it's, it's on their priority list.
So the contract we had with them, it was like $36,000 or something like that?
Somewhere around there.
That covered a lot of this work, right? So there may be some additional charges, but we don't expect there to be a need for a new contract or an extension.
No, no. And really, what she was pretty much explaining... No, no, and really, what she was pretty much explaining was the longest wait we're gonna have is pretty much having the surveyors go in. Because what I explained to her was I want to make sure that it's GPSed, that that culvert is located, so that whoever puts it back in, puts it back in the same exact spot, so we don't have any issues with Army Corps. And so, right now, the surveyors are the hard part, just scrambling around this time of year, doing a bunch of stuff. So, that's gonna be the longest wait.
Well, they facilitate the bid process with the contractors. Is that part of their contract work?
I believe they do. I believe they do. We discussed that the other night. I believe we discussed that. I think so.
All right, that's great. Thank you. Town hall water bid. I received just today, I have not had a chance to review it, a proposal, I'll call it, from Dunbar Water, which is in Sanford, Maine. Copies are being shared with the selectmen tonight for that. I've asked Jennifer to post it on the website. And this is a topic that has generated some discussion that I'm certainly aware of. And so, people have an opportunity to look at that. We'll bring it back at the next meeting. We'll have a discussion about it, and hopefully we can vote and move forward. We had an appropriated amount of, a warrant of like 30...
Are we posting all three of them, or have you already decided you're not doing the other two?
Well, I think the other two were, they were...
They were the full systems, yeah.
And that was in the $30,000 range. This proposal is $4,000. So, I don't know why we would consider the other two, but...
It's a different types of systems. They're just recommending that we don't need that system, that this will suffice. So, we're just gonna take it.
So, we just wanted to get it out. There'd been some interest in this, and I would imagine some expertise out there. So, you can take a look at that, be aware, we'll bring it up next, not next week, two weeks' agenda. We're off next week. And, okay, that's... Any questions about the water bid? Yes, Bernie, you wanna come up?
Thanks. Bernard Broder, East Shore Drive. Actually, what I wanted to speak to was the West Shore Drive culvert, if I may. And I'm not sure, I was surprised by the board's decision to go with replacing with a like-kind. And so, I'm not sure, it may be that I misunderstood some of the information. So, if I did, I'd love to be corrected on it, or to just know that this was considered. Because when I watched the meeting, it didn't seem like there was a lot of discussion about the various considerations. So, my understanding is that by selecting the option the board did, that the town forgoes a significant amount of grant money that the town could get if it selected one of the other options. That we potentially lose restocking of fish by the state by choosing this option. And having sat in on the engineers' meeting, it seems to me there's a significant risk that the project could expand beyond the original scope because we're dealing with water and soil and so forth. And if it does, then the town's at risk for probably several hundred thousand dollars in additional expenditures. There's a question of if we could get the permits quickly, and whether or not we could get the replacement materials quickly if we have to switch to another option. So, I don't really see the benefit here. It seems like the benefit to the general taxpayer is small. The risk is great. And other than, I understand the interests of the people that live on the pond and why they would like it to be that way, but it seems like the general populace is really taking a huge risk and foregoing grant money and so forth to make that happen. So, if I've misunderstood any of what I think are facts, I'd love to know because I'm just kind of surprised by the decision.
So, I don't know where you come up with several hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, getting in trouble, this and that. When we talked to Army Corps, this got all blown out of proportion big time. They were making it like if we did an in-kind, that, you know, if you moved one pebble or something like that. That's not, that's not what they mean. When you do an in-kind, meaning the culvert has to go back in the same spot. Doesn't mean you can't dig it out, which you have to do to remove it in the first place and install. It's that everything goes back the way it was. That's the difference, okay? The reason why I decided not to go to the road committee's advisement was I was here when we were talking to Army Corps, the engineers, and, you know, there was no plan of actual, how the road was gonna be built to go with these new culverts, okay? It's easy to design a culvert, Bernard, and say, "We're gonna put a culvert here, and it's gonna be way better than the other one." But you haven't, you're putting a horse before the buggy before the horse. Kind of have to have the road to go with the culvert. It's in a very difficult spot there. What I looked at, with, I have a little bit of experience on this, okay? That if you're gonna put these other culverts in, there was gonna be extensive work on the other sides of those bridges. Nothing was detailed there, and there was gonna have to be land grabs. There was issues with people's driveways, that we would have to worry about legal issues down the road. That was not mentioned. This is stuff there that, you know, I know all because these people come to me after the fact, landowners, okay? This was gonna be a huge deal. The people that were using the property from, okay, that was a big deal too, okay? I put it all together. That culvert's been there for, oh, 90, was it 96, 99?
98.
Was it 98, something like that, okay? A galvanized culvert brought it up. We've never had anybody call and say, "I can't get my boat through," okay? But we were listening to the people here that night. Not one person got up and said, "I can't get my boat through." Everybody's like, "It's fine the way it is. We don't want this, we don't want that." There was more opposition against going to the other culvert than for them. The road committee did their job. They're not road people either, okay? Well, a couple of them are, but the most of them, okay, most of the people haven't done that type of work, okay? I felt my opinion trumped that because I've got more experience in that. And I felt I made a decision on that just as well as the other two, that this was the most economical way. I don't care what the engineer put down for pressure, she should never have done that, okay? She added into that price, getting the access around. She didn't do that with the other two. That inflated that number, okay? But at the end of the day, I know it's cheaper to put in what you have there than to recreate the whole wheel. And so, I feel without having to do a complete road project, which we would have had to have done, we did the right thing.
Thank you. But just so I know for myself, I left with the understanding that if you start the excavation or whatever to replace the like-kind, and the parameters of that expand, like if soil starts, you know, eroding and falling, and you end up that you're, you know, feet beyond what it was, that you're in trouble.
That doesn't happen. Okay, that area is confined. When you take that culvert out, before you take that culvert out, you can find here, you put your coffer dams, everything's confined in that area, okay? Now, they're not gonna go there and say, "Oh, well, you're six inches here." You're talking feet, you would have to be feet. And the culvert is only gonna be the size that it was. The only difference is gonna be that I'm not gonna use the gabion baskets. It's gonna be the, some sort of concrete block or some sort, whatever, okay? That's the engineer's job to make sure that doesn't happen, okay? And it's not gonna be on us. If that goes sour, okay, on that job, that is on the contractor, not us. They take, they get bonded for these jobs. Their job is to do what is on that print and to be done, and that's what will be done.
Okay, well, thank you, and I hope that...
I don't wanna be, I don't wanna sound like I'm, but...
You know, there was one line that stuck in my head from Colin. He said, "Look, you got a 10-foot pipe there now. As long as there's a 10-foot pipe after the project's done." I think that's...
That's exactly what he was saying.
That's what matters. He said, "We're not gonna..." He said, "We're not gonna be down there looking to see if some dirt fell in the water." They're gonna rip out what's there, and they're gonna put something back in.
It's gonna be the same thing.
Yeah, and, you know, he just said, "That's the whole business of an in-kind replacement."
What they want, what they don't want, is they don't want to pull a 10-foot culvert out and have them put a 12-foot culvert in.
I totally...
And 10 feet longer, that's what...
Totally, totally understand that and agree.
So...
Okay, I hope you're right. And if you are, then I would certainly agree that you made the best decision.
I feel at the end of the day that we'll be in good shape.
Yep, and I hope we can get contractors that will take it, take on the risk and bond and all that.
That's an easy thought.
That's great, okay, thank you, I appreciate your...
Okay. Yes, sir.
On this subject matter, not that I attended any of the meetings and whatnot, but David, you made a comment, you said you have experience, which we know you do. In reaching your decision, was any of that put into public access in the print? Letting the people know why the decision was made to do this?
I did last, when we made the recommendation, I believe I...
On your recommendation, I mean, was, is that accessible to the public?
Yeah, it's on TV.
Okay, so it was all explained as to why you guys decided to go this way?
Yeah, I don't know if I went into quite the depth, I just did. But I mean, I went, you know, where I was concerned about the road issue. You know, with raising the road with the corner and all that, and da-da-da-da, and, you know, you know, Mr. Woods, his driveway, that was gonna be a major issue. You know, by elevating that road, his driveway's already steep, you know. It was gonna make that a bigger problem. And I felt that instead of recreating the wheel, that we, you know, put back what we've got, it's worked, it's been working. And, you know, obviously, the gabion baskets wasn't a great design, but it's lasted this long. So, I mean, it is what it is, but, no, I believe I gave a description, I mean...
I'm sorry, don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no.
But I think that a detail, call it a detailed analysis of what your experience is, because you all have different areas of expertise, okay? So, a detailed analysis that would have been made public to them, I think, would have avoided a lot of this.
No, I don't think it would have because...
But it would have...
Everybody took that meeting, all those meetings, everybody heard what they wanted to hear.
But it may have explained something in writing so that people could see it in black and white or whatever way. It's just what I'm, you know, I'm looking at it, I'm like, okay, so this is the reasons why, and I'm reading why. It wasn't, this wasn't, this was chosen over this.
I would expect all three of us to do it if I was, just because I do this for a living. I don't, I mean, I put big culverts and not anything quite that large. I mean, I've worked in the water and had to do coffer dams and all that. But, I mean, that job right there for the right companies, and they're not from around here, you know, the big guys. Those guys come in, they blow that thing out in three or four days.
And all I'm saying is that possibly a better explanation would have been better for the general public. Not everybody has your expertise.
If you want to understand it, at least from my perspective, go back and watch the video of the meeting, the public meeting with Army Corps, Inland Fisheries, and the engineer. And I think that that will clarify the issues and why I think the recommendation was made.
There was so much misinformation that was put out there that, you know, and I even believed it because back when I was putting in, you know, culverts, like when I did the Wilson Lake Dam and, you know, all the other ones up on the other end of town there. Wilson Lake Dam, I had to put a coffer dam in, I replaced that DEP there. I was allowed to expand that culvert 15%, you know, but, and I had to embed it, okay? Because I did the 15%, I had to embed at the time, it was different than now. So, when they say, "Oh, well, you can't do an in-kind because you'd have to embed it." Well, if you embed a 2-foot culvert, I mean, a 10-foot culvert, two feet, that makes an eight-foot culvert. Now, we're smaller than what we were, now we're forced to go the other way. But then when we meet with Army Corps engineers and say, "No, you don't have to do that. You just put it in the way it was, just call it good." Well, that makes a difference. So, but certain people were saying you had to do this, and they were wrong. Unfortunately, we brought in somebody who obviously does it for a living, you know, that's his job. He's the one who gives the permits, and they say, "You can do this." Then we looked at each other and go, "Well..."
Why wouldn't you?
Why wouldn't we do that?
That way, we don't have to put money into building a new road and, you know...
Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay. Ransom intent letter?
So, based on that Zoom meeting that we had, Ransom did ask for something very simple. That it's gonna essentially say, "Dear Maureen, this letter serves as a written notification of the Town of Acton's culvert design choice. Per the conversation, the select board voted to move forward with design number one being the in-kind replacement. This letter also gives authorization to Ransom and associates to contact state and federal agencies on our behalf." So, with a signature, she'll start the process.
I haven't signed it yet. I helped her write, well, I didn't write, I just blah, blah, blah.
Each one signature?
No, all three of you, there's a place for all three of you.
She just asked for authorization so she can contact these...
So, we need a motion?
Yeah, I think we need a motion on that.
Anytime you sign, yeah.
What's that?
Anytime you sign, you should have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we sign the intent, the notification, what's, what are we gonna call this here? Authorization letter to Ransom.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Employee health insurance intent letter?
Oh, yes, I have that. So, the treasurer was giving you a couple because some, a few things we have to discuss. So, there is life insurance for anybody that is already getting health insurance at no cost through this program, okay? So, we do have a couple of people that are choosing not to take health insurance, so that you need to decide for those employees who opt out of medical insurance, he or she will still be eligible to enroll in life insurance. The monthly premium, 30 cents per thousand, will be paid by, I have a letter for the employer and one for the employee. These are, remember, employees that are not taking health insurance. If you're taking health insurance, it's 100% paid. If they're not, who's gonna pay?
It's paid by who?
I believe it's through the insurance company.
That's right, so there's no cost to the town.
Right, right.
But there's health insurance, which is one-time salary.
For the life insurance.
For the life, so if you're in in-health insurance, I'm sorry. You're in health insurance, you get a life insurance policy free to the town, free to the employee, one-time salary. So, now you've got people that are not in the health plan.
Right.
And so, what about them?
So, if they're not in the health plan, we still have to make them, they're still eligible for it, so we have to offer it to them. So, the question is, is do you want to, as the employer, pay the premium at 30 cents per thousand of coverage? Or do you want to offer it to them and have the employee pay it?
Thought on that, but... Personally, we have employees that are opting not to take our health insurance, which quite frankly saves the town a great deal of money. And so, from my perspective, at 30 cents a thousand, is that a monthly rate?
Yes.
So, if somebody's making 30,000, what are we talking about, $9?
Yeah, I'm looking at one of the employees at maybe 900 for the year.
900 for the year versus if they enrolled in a health plan, it could be 15,000?
And the other employee, I'm gonna say, makes about that.
I think we ought to pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. It's minimal and...
Seems minimal.
Oh, it's a no-brainer, really good.
Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's... That's part one.
It seems like a no-brainer, but does an employee who opts out of insurance, because maybe they have it elsewhere, do they get a financial benefit for opting out?
No.
They don't get a salary increase or anything? Oh, then it's a total no-brainer.
Yeah. Ray?
My question is, the dollar amount of the life insurance policy. Now, when I was employed, or being employed, past employers have offered that also. But what they offered was an equal to one-year salary.
That's what this is.
That's what this is?
One-year, one-time salary.
All right, thank you.
If you make 30,000, you get a $30,000 life insurance. And if you aren't in a health plan, we're gonna pay...
The 30 cents per thousand.
30 cents per the thousand or 900 bucks.
Okay.
Whatever it works out to be.
That's.
Would it be available to the employee to purchase more than one year?
Uh, through their own private companies. I don't think this doesn't allow.
They offered a supplemental. Now, maybe I'm thinking of past life, but I thought they allowed.
If they're in the, maybe.
Well, I mean, first of all, what's free to the employees that are in the health insurance is only this one year. They have lots of other supplemental things that we can buy, accidental, you know, short-term disability. They're actually coming here on December 12, so I could tell you more after we have a class from them.
And the reason I ask is that I worked for a pretty large company, and the employee was able to purchase up to five times their yearly salary.
If they have it, it would be no cost to the town. And I don't know why we wouldn't offer it, but we'd have to look at the program.
Right. The town would have to, the employee would have to pay the difference. Okay. So that's, so you've decided that. The other piece, um.
Do we need a vote on that?
Well, you still have one more piece of the letter. I've got four options for you here now. So now that we've decided the employer will pay it, now, the other thing is the treasurer gave you the new premiums based on all of the employees, based on if they picked the first one, the middle one, or the lowest one. And we rewatched the, the video to be sure. You didn't make a decision if you were leaving at 85%. The meeting actually ends with David saying that we're still considering other things. So the treasurer prepared.
I left it wide open because we hadn't really made a decision.
The treasurer made letters at 85 and 90% in hopes that you have those numbers you gave her for discussion.
This is whether or not the town would change its contribution rate from 85% to 90%? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm not suggesting.
I personally would not do that. But, you know, we, how do others feel?
I think 85 is, I mean, that's what.
That's, that's a pretty good contribution rate.
Didn't the audience even think so? I just, it's, nothing. I'm sorry.
Audience doesn't think so.
We'll open it up for discussion in a moment. David?
I think change our minds.
What I want, what I, what I was hoping to do with this, this plan was make it more enticing for employees, future employees, whether or not 85 or 90% makes a difference on the, whether or not you're going to, you know, take that job or not, I'm not sure. Because I pay for my own health insurance, so. But, um, the, if we have the money to do it, I know we have surplus in that account. Whether or not it's even feasible to do it or not, I don't know. I believe it is because we were averaging, remember, we had some rates, some of the plans here. You know, they're all over the place, so you kind of have to average it out. Um, you know, 85, I guess is fine. But I do believe that if there's money enough in there to do it for 90, I would do that. Just because I see, I see the, um, problem we have with hiring and trying to get people, people looking, we don't have much else going for us. You know, because, I mean, we can't compete, you know, the numbers on, you know, hire people like, well, they're paying Kenny Buck and Wells and stuff like that. So, you know, you look at it, well, why would you come to work if they're paying 90% of your health benefits? Now, whether or not 5% difference, is it going to make a difference? Probably not. So if you guys are fine with 85, then I guess I would be.
You know. Go ahead.
I'm just going to say, let's hear what other people have to say.
We would have to change our personnel, our personnel policy, wouldn't we? Because right now, I think our personnel policy says 85%.
85, right.
I, I take your point about making sure that we can attract good, qualified candidates and employees. And healthcare is an important element of that. But I, I think about it as total compensation, which is when you look at the salary that's paid, the healthcare, the retirement, time off. All of those are factors that I think most people will consider when they're considering a job. And if we have, I think it would be appropriate for the town to actually engage a benefit consultant to come in and take a look at our compensation and our benefit programs, talk to some other local towns where we might be recruiting, and to give us hard facts about how do we stack up against these towns? Because healthcare, we may be doing well on, but there may be other elements that we're not. And so I would, I would look at it as a total compensation issue rather than just dealing with this one off right now. There's another thing that says we can't, in six months from now, come back and increase it to 90% if we find that that's what the market is, is currently.
Well, I mean, at the same time, I mean, the health benefits, even if they were 100%, this is the bigger picture we're going to look at. You know, I know of guys who work for a nearby town that will get really great benefits, but they said the benefits don't pay the bills.
That's right. So. It's why it's, it's all part of a package.
Yeah.
That, that you want to look at and make sure that you're, you're, you've positioned yourself to be attractive to potential candidates. And, um, I'm not familiar with what other municipalities are doing in that regard. And I guess I'd like to know that before, before we make this change.
I think one of my concerns though was, I, I didn't really point it out before, was what I was worried about was when we were going through was the differences on their, the employees' costs.
Yeah.
Because we're changing the plan.
And they're all going up.
You know, they were going up, and we just wanted to make sure we offset that enough so that they didn't get a shocker, you know?
But how many plans have we offered?
Three.
Three plans?
So.
And the, the, the low end, if that was chosen, it would be no impact on?
No, they all had impacts.
But it was really.
I mean, it depends on if it was family, single, I mean.
But what they're also getting is a much better plan.
Right.
They're getting a better plan.
Yeah. The, the plans that we've, that all three plans are better than the last plan we had. And originally, when we were looking at the plans, we were actually looking at just doing one. And getting a super-duper plan and then possibly paying a little bit more, but to offset their costs. But, um, you know, I was just worried that the, the impact on the employee, it might be a little much.
Kim?
I'm just thinking here.
Make a motion to whatever percent you want.
Well, we don't have to take a, make a motion on the 85.
We could just.
Well, you have to sign an intent letter.
No, but we don't have to decide to change it. We can leave it as it is.
Correct. So I have an 85.
Decide at any point to change it.
I don't want anybody's, I don't want anybody's premiums to go up too much.
If, if.
Did you look at the spreadsheet she gave you?
I did. I did. I don't know about you. I, I just would like to know how we stack up with all of our benefits and compensation for all departments, administrators in town hall, the fire department. And let's, let's look at it in total and make sure that we're paying people to the market. From my perspective, that's where we ought to, that should be our goal. Pay them a fair wage according to the market for those jobs, for both salaries and benefits. And if we do that, I think we'll be an attractive place for people to come and work. Do you want to think more, Kim?
Not really. I think that, you know, why don't we do the 90%? We can still do what you want to do and see across the board. We can always change this if, if we feel it's too much or, you know.
We have to change our personnel policy.
Right.
Once you go up.
When, coming down?
Go down.
I just, I don't want to.
That's a takeaway. Once they've had it for one pay period, very hard to take.
But they do have, they do have a different plan they can go to, which is still better than the last one they had. The impact's a little bit, a little bit more. You're still getting a better plan. If we stay at the 85 for now, um, let's just do that for now.
Are we ready for public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I believe there was a couple of meetings ago that you had two speculations that you were going to be submitting to the insurance company.
I was going to get to that.
And one of them was that the employee, employee pay 15%, which would then put the town at 85, which currently is, I believe. So you said you were going to get to something.
Ray was, we were hearing that.
That we couldn't dictate.
That.
You had to.
Our intent was to have the employee pay 15% of the cost, individual cost of those three plans. And what we were hearing was that we had to, like, take the average or maybe take the middle plan.
Right.
And, and whatever that 15% was, that would be given as a contribution rate for regardless of what plan you're in. So you might have somebody who's in a, a very inexpensive plan that's effectively getting a 95% rate, and someone who's in a more expensive plan effectively getting less than a 15% rate. And that made no sense to us. And in fact, we verified that's not the case. So it would be, take the cost of the plan, total cost of the plan, multiply it by 15%, and that's what the employee will pay. So we've confirmed that. And that's the way every employer works.
Just a fact check.
Yeah.
All right. So now, if you're looking at the town paying 90%, then wouldn't that go to the employee paying only 10%?
10%, right. Yes.
We hadn't made that decision yet on that. And when we were trying to kind of get to that point tonight where whether or not we were going to stay with the 85 or go 90. If we went to 90, we'd have to change our personnel policy because the personnel policy says 85%. So, uh, I think we're on the way to going to 85.
Did, and, and what was the other issue, Jennifer, or others? Do you remember what the other?
Whether or not they could have services outside of the state.
And, and we confirmed that they can.
They can. Okay.
So both those issues were resolved favorably. So the vote that we took allowed us to proceed, assuming we were satisfied with the answer to those questions. So we've already approved moving to the plan. Now we're talking about rate of contribution.
And the life insurance.
And the life insurance. Okay.
Wayne, I'm Fire Chief. So I guess my two cents on the matter, having full-time employees that were in my office this week with these changes and phone calls and whatnot. As Jennifer had said, all those rates are going up regardless of what plan we choose. I like the idea. We were headed towards the 90%. It's 5%. But when some of my full-time employees are already at bare minimum at their hourly rate, now we're increasing their premiums, which is less they're taking home to pay the rest of the bills. So I would, as a department head with full-time employees that has to worry about the retention and the recruitment, I'm definitely in favor of the 90%. There, my, my full-time basic firefighter EMT is making 1950 an hour. Let's just remember that.
That to me is the bigger issue.
Correct. I'm just throwing it out there.
And that's what I would.
Correct.
I, I don't know what the market is, but my guess is, you know.
One town next door.
We want to make sure they're being paid the market.
Correct.
If you do that, then I think the differences on these health insurances probably, I think people would be much happier if we.
Correct. Would, that impact wouldn't be as big a deal if our rates were where they should be.
Yeah.
And that's why, I mean, Wayne intends on carrying on the conversation last year when the $5 was split up this year as we're going to budget season, which should get them back to where they need to be.
We were, we're, we're obviously going to try to work with you like we promised you last year. You know, we didn't do the five. We did the 250. We're trying to do it in moderation. But, you know, this is a work in progress. And, um, we want to see, you know, what we've done, what we've done with other employees in town, we've gotten an average of the whole general area. And we, we want to be right in the middle. We don't want to be the high, and we don't want to be the low.
Yeah.
We want to be in the middle. So we want to work with the fire department. All, all.
All departments.
Correct. I mean, it's not just the fire department. Every, every department in town is in the same boat. With the, with the insurance policy we have, you know, and you're right. If you're not making a whole lot of money on this side, you might have great pennies. You might not get sick, but ain't put food on the table. But we have to deal with this first. Budget season's coming, and we're going to, I know, you, you, you hung around with Rick a lot, and you're a good salesman. You're already pushing your budget. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was said. I mean.
No, I appreciate you.
It's tough already and, uh, without getting into more of it. No, we want to make sure everybody's getting paid fairly. We're trying to do it in moderation. And, and we, we don't want to, we don't want to be splurging just because we can. We want to make sure we're doing it right. And, but this year, I feel that, yeah, you're going to, the employee is going to be paying a little bit more, but they can have way better plans.
These are great plans.
And we'll just correct the other part later. Good. Thank you.
Just one other thing. This is something I have some experience with in past lives. And 85%, and I, I don't know about municipalities, but I'll tell you, in business and other nonprofits, 85% contribution rate by the employer is a very good contribution. And I don't know what others' experiences are. I don't know of anybody that's higher than that, to be honest with you. And most organizations are dropping that. And that's not our intent here at all. But they're lowering that contribution rate by the employer down because it's just so damn expensive. And they're, you know, the, many of these organizations' budgets are under incredible stress. So I think it's great if we can hold it at 85, increase the benefits, and then we, as we say, we'll, we'll take a look at the salaries and they aren't right. Let's fix them.
By no means was I saying the 85 wasn't good.
No, I know.
If we had the option and the ability to go more. If we go up to 90%, the town's spending more money there. Then we turn around and you guys want this for a raise, it all snowballs into like, holy cow.
It all comes out of one pot. Yeah.
Comes to the same place.
Yes, sir, Ray. That's a very good comment that you made, Dave. This all comes out of the budget. The budget comes out of the people's pocket. Okay? So you're talking about, and I understand the department head saying, you know, hey, this would be good to have employees, trying to keep them, bring them on, that type of situation. And I see that all being looked at as one-sided from the employer's side of view. Okay? But where the money is coming from as far as taxpayers, okay? Now taxpayers are having to foot the bill if you go to 90% or even the 30 cents per thousand, which is a pretty decent insurance rate.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
But that has already been decided that the, the town should pay that. Okay? So now we're looking at, okay, we're going to pay 30 cents per thousand for a life insurance. Now we're talking to increasing 5%, and that's all coming out of my pocket.
Hold on a minute. How many employees do we have that are not taking health insurance probably that would end up having a, a life insurance policy?
Two.
We're talking about two people.
Okay.
So just put that in context. This is not.
How many employees do you have that are taking life insurance?
Nine of 10?
Or health insurance. I'm sorry.
Oh, health insurance.
Nine of 10?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's nine of 10.
And 12.
This is not a large group of people.
So I'm just, I'm just asking you guys not only to look at it from that perspective of an employer, but also look at it as a perspective of the taxpayer.
So we have to look at it as an employer. Plus, we also have to look at it as the reason why we have to look at it as employer is because the town keeps voting in these programs. You know, they, they want this, 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 and that to keep those things operating. We have to keep people in those positions with inflation.
Benefits?
Benefits. You know, people aren't coming to work for Town of Acton unless there's benefits. And it's, and we're having a same problem right now just with our land use secretary. He's trying to do that. We've had to raise the, the asking, you know, the wage on that just to get a couple more replies. So, you know, I understand what you're talking about on the, on the taxpayers part because I'm a taxpayer too, you know? That, you know, yeah, it's, it's, it's a big deal. But if they don't, if the town keeps going and voting that they want to keep putting these programs through, full-time fire department and all that, we have to make sure it's operational. And that's, that's the unfortunate part about it.
Hi.
Joyce.
Joyce Backshe. This is sort of going back a little bit. But Tom, you had made a comment about what were kind of the averages around that employers.
Yeah. I assume you went on the web. What'd you find?
I sure did.
What'd you find, Joyce?
I found that you're right in the middle. You might be a little bit high. Um, but the average.
I mean, what, at 85?
Yeah, yeah. That might be 2% high for a small town, a small employer.
Employer, not town.
83%.
You're comparing it to towns or, or other employers?
These are employees.
Okay, so they're not towns. That's what he was asking for.
Well.
Because there, there is going to be a difference when I tell them what the actual town numbers are.
Yeah, but, you know, it, it gives you something. And only one other thing I would say is that, yeah, we know it's expensive, but, um, you know, you have a child or a teenager, and they need to go to the pediatrician. And you don't, you, you think you don't have money now? Just walking in to see the pediatrician is $90 for a visit if you don't have insurance. And God forbid, they get hurt and they go to the emergency room.
Insurance is cheaper.
You know, having, having insurance is much cheaper. You're absolutely right.
No, it's cheaper if you don't have insurance, believe it or not. You go to the doctor, they will give you a break on it if you don't have insurance.
Well, that's true in anything, but there you get the balance of...
Until something bad happens, then you screw it up.
That's right.
In the final analysis, the plans offer a much better benefit. So for those with families or individuals, they're going to find that their out-of-pocket is significantly less.
Significantly, I know there were people here that had an accident and had to have surgery, and then went and said, finally, I can... And they don't work for the town, Jen, just to be clear.
Well, no, I was just trying to clarify. I didn't want...
I know, but finally they said, I can also get my hammer toe taken care of because now I'm, my deductible is making it worthwhile, you know? So insurance, it's high, but it's cost of living. You've got to have it.
Thank you. Susan.
Hi, Susan Man. I just have one question. Do they have a deductible as well?
Depends on the plan.
They all have deductibles.
But one is really low.
$1,000.
$1,000, up to $2,500?
Right.
Yeah.
The reason why I ask is, the last job I had, it was 100%, but I had a $3,500 copay, and for two people, that's $7,000, and to go off of what Joyce was saying, yeah, break a bone.
I thought the P O S C didn't have a deductible, did it?
See, a typical insurance, $15,000 a year for a family, right? $15,000 a year for a family.
Yeah.
Right? So if you're, say you go two or three years without having to go do anything major, you actually make out of that 100% pretty well.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm not complaining because I was at 100%, but $3,500 deductible was the year that I had some major medical, my husband. I mean, that was the year I actually got a tax break for how much I paid.
I believe there is one of the plans, which of course is the most expensive plan...
Yeah, C, you're right.
P O S C, which I don't think it has got a deductible.
It has zero deductible, you're right.
Zero deductible. So this is like, you know, you're paying a copay when you go to the doctors, a copay when you buy a prescription, but these are really...
A lot of them be a wash.
Yeah, so if somebody wants, if someone's got a family and they want that kind of coverage, it's there for them. A little higher premium because they're paying 15% of a more costly plan, but that's a decision they can make.
They can take the lower plan, get a zero deductible, pay just a little bit more, and they're...
15% with no deductible? That's good.
Yeah.
That is really good.
These are nice plans. They were well-designed.
And especially if somebody has a family, you're saying, we can cover your whole family.
And as I last calculated, we'll know when people actually enroll in the plan because right now we're estimating, we believe net-net there'll be a savings after all of this, including the life insurance to the budget, and we'll report out at some point what that is, okay?
Can't give a number on that because we don't know what people are going to take the plans.
No, we don't know which plans they're going to be in. So do we want, have we covered everything, Jennifer?
Yeah, there's a, Kim has the intent, I'll let her go over with you.
So we make a motion? Well, actually, I want you to look at this for a sec.
No, that's it.
Yeah, just...
So I make a motion, we approve the joining the M M E H T offer in medical life insurance to the ineligible, to the eligible employees.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay, so you got to sign that?
Yeah, I'll sign it.
Is that related to this or something else?
This is next, I think. Just looks different.
We kind of got off subject, it's like I had to get back on track here.
There you go. I just get a kick out of this. A poll permit? This is, this is to do what? Put a poll in?
C and P, they send these to us when they go to the polls.
Okay, so it's kind of a... Is this what you want me to sign?
Yes, I'd...
Okay. Only one signature required?
Two is better.
Two is better? Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right. So that takes care of that item. Direct billing agreement with MMA. Oh, okay. We need a motion to authorize MMA, for the town to enter an agreement with MMA that would allow them to have a direct debit against our checking account for premiums associated with the plans that were just voted on.
Exactly.
Someone want to make it? Motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion as read.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, I think it's been signed. And do you want to sign that one?
That's a requirement anyways, they kind of make you do that.
Yeah.
I know some of these plans, like personal ones, like yourself, you're going to see them.
Closure checking account.
So if you remember, several months ago this summer, we were the victim of fraud with our checking account. Someone sold one of the town checks, endorsed it, signed it, cashed it, they were prosecuted. Partners Bank did a phenomenal job with the Sheriff's Department, prosecuted it, but obviously in the meantime, we closed the account and opened a new one. It hasn't been used in at least six or seven months, other than one transaction that we'd been waiting for. We have an individual who lives in Greece, and every year he does a wire transfer, so we waited for that to come through. Sadly, he's passed away in the meantime, and both of his properties have sold, but we're looking for a motion to close the account number ending in 7899. We will move the balance of 981640 to the regular general account. There's no reason to keep it open, we're never going to use it again.
Great. You have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion.
Oop, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we close account number 7899.
Second that.
All those in favor? Okay. Mr. Ham.
I would like to purchase a 40-foot overseas container for the dump to get rid of the one that's falling apart up there, the 20-footer that's falling apart.
All those boxes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm looking for approval to get, take that out of my budget, and it's going to be between $4,000 and $5,000.
Okay. And I understand you've done some checking on this?
I have.
It's going to be under $5,000, as I understand it?
Yes, I would, yes.
So it doesn't need to be bid, correct?
Is it going to be a 96?
Is it going to be under $5,000?
I'm going to shoot for that, yes.
I would recommend you go to 96, especially if you're going inside with the Skidsteer, right?
Yeah.
I've got one of those at home, and you can either get one that's only nine feet tall or you can get one that's 96 tall.
Right.
And he's running equipment.
And I haven't pinpointed him down for exact thing because I didn't know, because I talked to Tom, we were going to get a 40 and a 20, and with permission from you guys, I would like to have District One come down with his excavator, pick the one that has wheels on, and drop it to the ground so we don't do the steps lugging TVs into that container, and that would save on another container down the line.
Because there's a safety issue.
Correct. Climbing them...
Why did he put stuff there? Just to level it out or something?
What?
Well, it's just...
It has wheels. It's got wheels on it, and they got steps going in it, and we're lugging...
And the steps are falling apart.
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, they're like this, come on.
Yeah, so if you take it and set it on the ground...
Is it a conx box or is it a trailer?
It's a trailer.
Okay.
It's a trailer that's been there for years, and I don't know why it hasn't been addressed as a safety thing before now.
Want to take the axles off?
I like to have, right, lift it up, cut the axles off, cut the landing gear off, and set it on some railroad ties, and it'll only be off the ground about nine inches.
That's a good idea.
That would be a lot safer lugging TVs and stuff.
All right, let's deal with the first issue.
Yep.
A 40-foot?
Yes.
You've done some work on pricing.
Yes, I gave it to the treasurer.
And as I understand it, there was, you had at least three prices?
Yes.
You had gotten?
Yes.
Not through a formal bid process, but by you calling around to some places?
Correct.
And the source you identified would be the least expensive source?
Correct.
Okay, and as I saw the numbers, it was something less than $5,000. So...
I also got a guy who can call that, deals with them too.
And the policy, just so, the policy says up to 4999, three competitive prices in writing.
Yeah, I haven't, I can...
You do not have three in writing?
I haven't got it, yeah, because I haven't, you know...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I do have a verbal...
And with the extended length, you don't think it's going to go over $5,000? Because the one that you showed me was exactly $5,000.
Yeah.
And if it's $5,000 and not 4999, that means we haul into the next category.
You understand that. If it gets to five, we got to bid it out.
And if we bid it out, we're going to be wasted, nobody's going to give us a bid on it, because nobody can get their hands on it as it is.
Right.
I can't believe you're going to give us $5,000, because I've been pricing them out. I'm five, six, seven, eight.
I called around, and they were a lot more than that.
Yeah, they were.
But, okay. Well, let's get in touch with the person that David knows.
Okay.
You might already have him on your list, but I'll let you know, because I know he had two of them on his trailer the other day. It was, you know, he wheels and deals them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I got mine.
And so work with the treasurer and Jennifer?
Yeah.
To get that documentation in place?
Yeah.
When you get the okay from her, go ahead.
Okay.
That's, no, we want to vote on that, I guess, so...
Do we have to?
Well, no, as long as he's following policy.
He's following policy.
Are we all in agreement?
I mean, the only thing is, you know, it's not one of his line item budgets, so you need to be aware that it's coming out of somewhere.
Well, what we need to do is first get an actual number before we make a motion to pull anything out of anything.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Also, I have a container, or compactor I should say, that we do not use anymore, that we used to use for plastic, and plastic is not being salvable, we'll put it that way. I would like to get rid of that container and get, put some money back to the town.
So, Tom, I, not stepped my toes or anything, but I went to the transfer station and dumped some stuff off.
Yeah, yeah.
We drove the liaison, so, and so we got talking, and we did go and take a look at that thing, and from what I get out of it is the rams will leak in, it's all rusted out, it's going to be something that either we're going to, either we get rid of it so you can use a spot to put another dumpster there, or we'd be replacing it anyways.
What kind of plastic?
Why wouldn't we replace it?
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, why wouldn't we want to replace it and recycle? I know we're not getting as much money, but shouldn't we still be trying to do that?
According to Bob, because I'm new at this, according to Bob, we would pay more to get rid of the plastic than we would get.
We'd pay to get rid of it.
We can't, yeah, nobody wants it.
Put aside the cost for a moment.
Yeah.
What do they, let's say we pay someone to take it. What do they do with it? Does it end up in a landfill someplace?
I have no idea.
Because if it actually gets recycled, then I think that's something for us to consider. Because, you know, stewards of the environment, you know?
Should be.
We ought to be doing the right thing. But if it's just going to end up in a landfill someplace...
Charge us to take to a landfill where we just put a dumpster in.
Then why are we asking people to bring plastic in? And what are we doing, dumping it in the dumpster?
That's what we're doing right now. The only thing that, you know, down the line, if things should go the other way, we have people already trained to commit, and when they dump their bags and stuff, they have returnables in there too. So we pick the returnables out, that goes in one spot, and the rest of it goes like...
And you're doing that because the returnables are, there's a deposit that you're getting paid for?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we get money every so often, like during the summertime, we're like a thousand dollars a month.
So for instance, milk cottons, those are...
Clear ones, the clear number twos, we recycle. We do get money for them. Like the hoods, the ones you can't see through, we don't get nothing.
And so they end up in the dumpster?
They end up in the, yes.
And if we had somebody haul them off, we don't know where they go.
I don't personally. I never tracked it, but I guess I could take it.
I guess I don't want to get rid of the machine. I wouldn't want to get rid of the machine until, until...
Well, the problem is, is if we're going to keep the machine, we've got to figure out what it's going to cost to refab pot it because it's rusted, you can see right up to the top of it.
Okay.
And the rams are leaking, so what we're trying to figure out is whether or not, my cell, I look at it, it looks old, beat up, it's...
We'd need to replace it if you're going to...
So five years from now, somebody comes up with the technology, and that stuff can be recycled, and there's a market for it, then we're going to want to recycle that, if I get this right, and we're going to have to buy something that'll allow us to compress those.
Yeah. Either another baler like we have now, you know, or...
A baler?
Yeah. Not the compactor, I mean, talking about the, like, when we put the cardboard in or something.
Oh, yeah.
The milk jugs go in that same type of thing, and when we get so much, we bail it and Punske takes it.
So the question is really whether or not, what we should be discussing is whether or not this thing is worth fixing?
Yeah.
Replacing or not replacing?
Are there some other materials that are like this? For instance, glass?
Yeah, I mean...
We have people drop off glass.
Yeah.
And what happens to that?
That goes into the demo.
So, and that's because nobody wants it?
Correct.
Or we'd have to pay somebody to haul it?
Correct.
We don't know, even when they did, where it would end up?
Right, and nobody wants it. They don't, the people that you're going to haul it to, they don't even want it.
So...
Talk about glass bottles and stuff like that?[1594.82]
Yeah, oh, glass bottles, plates, cups, whatever.
So, so people are being asked to recycle?
Yep.
And, and we're not recycling? We are recycling cardboard.
Yep.
Probably aluminum cans.
Aluminum cans, yep.
Plastic bottles that are clear. And are we recycling anything?
Soda bottles and that sort of stuff.
What was that?
Soda bottles and all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, because there's a returnable.
Correct, that is correct.
But the stuff that's bought out of state, what do you do with that?
We, that all goes in, in that.
In the dumpster?
Yep. No, no. The returnables, the new hand, like soda bottles, beer bottles, and that stuff, no matter if it comes from New Hampshire or what, it all goes-
They, they take them.
They do take them, yes.
Oh, good.
So, I'm not familiar with what you do with them. Do you compact the aluminum?
The dented, the dented cans that they can't get the barcode off of, yes, we run them through a crusher, and then I take, well, somebody takes them to, to the recycling place, and we get money for them.
There's an outfit, and I don't have the name of it with me. There's an outfit that, I think I got it from Penske.
I think.
Because I spoke to him about this. And I said, so, how do we find out where these things go? If they can be recycled, whether there's a cost to do it or not? I think that's one, that's something we should know.
Yep, absolutely.
Because we want to keep this stuff out of the environment if it's at all possible. But if they're just going to dispose of it like we would, then maybe we should stop taking it. Tell people they don't have to bring that in to the recycling building any longer. They can just leave it in the trash. And so that they have less things that they need to, you know, sort and handle separately.
And the only thing with that-
Does that make sense?
Freeze up the transfer station.
And, yeah, freeze up the transfer station as well.
The only thing with that is when they mix it with the returnables, that's going-
No, no, no. What he's saying is, instead of telling people to recycle this, this, and that, if you don't have to recycle certain things, throw it in the regular trash. Still recycle your other stuff.
Yeah.
But there's no sense in recycling stuff than taking it to you guys, and you just take it over to the dumpster anyways.
Yeah, that's, yeah. I totally agree with that, you know.
There's a firm in Portland, and I, I forget the name of it, and I'll get, I'll, I'll share it with you guys.
Yep.
That, that actually does this for other towns. And they can come in and advise you on, you know, exactly where this stuff ends up?
Mm-hmm.
And what you ought to be recycling versus not. And I think it might be useful to get somebody to come in. So I would not do anything with that thing, that pressure? Until we figure out what the story is here. Let's figure out what we're going to do?
Yep.
And, and then deal with it.
Yeah. I mean, well, the, what, yeah, I guess, the question is this, though. What you're going to have to do, what you should do is get a, see what it's going to cost to fix the one we got. Work on doing that.
Okay.
Figure out whether or not the, the plastics or whatever we're going to go in or not. If we do, then he's already got a price on how much it's going to fix. And at the same time, he's got a price on a new one.
Yeah, let's just find out with the economics.
See where we are, you know, before we make any big decisions.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Personnel policy?
So you all have a copy of it. We need to make adjustments to page six. Yeah?
I'll find it.
David here, David?
Here it is. Thank you.
Page six, under health insurance. The third paragraph down needs to say that the select board will select health insurance plans to be provided following the first 60 days of employment, instead of 90, because we're out of, or in violation. And then you can see the next four paragraphs that have stricken out. It's just because those are regarding the health savings account. The new plan doesn't need those, so that can be stricken out. But I would ask you to read over the rest of the policy for the next meeting and see if there's anything else that you want to make amendments to.
So we don't have to vote on this tonight? On table, this is the vote?
Well, yeah, I mean, I want, I just assume it's such a big document, and there's a lot of stuff in there regarding-
Well, this is the only change we're making, though, out of the whole policy.
Well, yeah, but if we're, if we're making a change-
You have the option to make others. Okay, all right, fine. We'll put that aside for next week. Thank you. I think I've already done the audit update.
I didn't know you were going to do that.
No, I didn't look down in the agenda to see, see that it was there, so I think we can skip over that. Public comment?
I said, you're respecting your elders. Thank you. Tom, you have worked very hard to show the volunteers in this town your appreciation. And you, you've been very positive about all this. Earlier this evening, there was a comment made about the road committee and the experience of the people that are on the road committee. And there was only two people with experience with the roads. And that was our two road commissioners. That is not true. We have two other people on the road committee that has years of experience working on the roads. So when the, now you have four people with experience on the road committee. I just took offense to it, that's all. Thank you.
Can I ask who those two others were? Okay, you're going, we're going to make a statement like that, and we can't even give any information off, but-
I can get out and move.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Why don't you do that, Dennis?
What's that, Dennis?
I want, I want years, I want what jobs they did, other than your, your lack of experience.
Oh, wait a minute now, wait a minute now.
I didn't, I wasn't trying, what I, what I, listen, okay, Dennis, you come up and started this. My, my point was, okay, the people on this road committee don't do this for a living, other than two of them. I don't believe the other ones do. I don't, I don't care how many classes to go to, okay? I know I'm wrong every time you speak, Dennis, okay? But at the end of the day, I made an educated decision, because I got more experience than all of them, okay? So, and the people that should be making the recommendations, okay, should be the road commissioners.
David, Dennis, do you have any other comments?
I hope not.
Oh, come on, David, let's not do this. Let's not do this.
Well, that was, it was, it was a hack job, just waiting to just make that point. He knew where this was going.
Okay.
I'll tell you, on the outside, their experience moved the two people out.
Thank you. Ray?
Yes, sir. I do have a question. Been going to the monthly meetings for the school board. At the last one that they had, I see that they had locked in a price for fuel.
Yeah.
And that price for fuel was in conjunction with the town of Sanford, Sanford High School, and Acton.
Yeah.
And I was wondering, do, does Acton not use the same type of fuel? Or why are we, I mean, they locked in at 384, again.
I understand they use oil.
Yeah.
And we use propane substantially. And we had some bids, competitive bids. They were not done in conjunction with other entities. It was done for Acton alone. But the competitive bids, I don't think we even opened the other bids. Did I remember that right?
Yeah, our, our propane bid, and that's what we use primarily everywhere for the last few years, has ranged from $1.60 to $1.80. I mean, it is dirt cheap, where we don't even want to open that can of worms. We don't join-
And I think we got a contract, I'm sorry, I didn't mean-
It's all, it's happening online, it's-
No, everyone does it.
I know.
And that was my question, is if, if we don't use, use the same type of fuel, then understandable. So, I was just wondering what we use.
We do a lot of, like, our lunch stuff in school, they do a lot of that stuff together anyways.
They do. They do a lot with Sanford, and I think it's because of the relationship with the high school.
Which helps us out, because they use some volume that we've got to piggyback on there.
All right, I just, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Any other comments? Okay, pending items.
Yeah.
Oh. Yes, Susan?
You caught me, I wasn't paying attention. Again, my name is Susan. I want to go back to the open town meeting. And, you know, the voters want to keep it. We, I had put a couple of posts out before the election, and some of the people's comments I thought were valuable. But a lot of people were complaining or concerned, I don't want to use the word complaint, concerned that childcare. And I actually asked people about it. People that now have grandchildren remember being able to bring their kids to the library and have, and the kids can hang out there while the parents were at the meeting. I think that's something that has to be addressed. We've got to do things to help people to come to the, to the meetings. Childcare is probably a good one. And, you know, I don't know how we would go around it, but I think it would be an important thing to be able to offer people coffee, donuts. That's another thing. Another thing that I noticed is whenever there's an election, we always know who's running and so forth. Why? Because they all have signs all over town. Why can't we work out, there's a place in town that does signs. Why couldn't we negotiate some really nice pricing? Because we are going to be going back to them every year to put signs all over town. We don't have a newspaper anymore.
Are you talking about having-
To advertise the town.
The town has nothing to do with the signs at all.
You just say, put some signs on.
Are you talking about elections?
No, no, no.
You can't just go there.
No, 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 misunderstood, and I probably wasn't clear. I was thinking to myself, how is it everybody knows about the election? Oh, it's signs all over the place.
Advertising is a big thing, it is.
But there's no newspaper anymore, so we got to be-
Yeah, they get that, yeah, well, yeah, it used to be the brand. They've got, they've got their sign out, the one that you use for-
Yes, I noticed that.
They even had that for a selectman's meeting.
Probably two weeks ago, I noticed that, Milton.
It's all their own.
Yes, Milton Mills, yep, that's a-
That's another idea. Small signs, like the candidates use, but it would say, "Town meeting on such and such a day, date, and time." Another thing would be to send out a flyer to everybody. And then also drive them to the website to look at all the articles. So that it could do a kind of dual thing. Remind people of the meeting, plus drive them to look at the articles. This is just some ideas.
Just voted to keep it, right?
That's right, so let's hope they show up.
We're going to have to change venues this year. We're going to have to have a full day here.
Well, we'll see.
I, I mean, I don't think we're still going to get more than 30, but 700.
It would be nice.
Come on, come on. That's negative. No, we want to, we would like to get 100.
But I, I just, it was kind of, the 700 vote, I would like to see, you know, at least a small majority.
Oh, I'm with you. I, how many times have you read a post in mind kind of indicating more people should be attending these meetings?
I got to tell you, when we update the website, this is the kind of thing where people ought to be able to. We could put something on the website saying, "We're trying to organize the upcoming town meeting. Tell us what would, tell us what could be done to help encourage you or make it easier for you to come." And people could put in comments like that.
Right.
That's a feature that is, you know, common in websites today.
And I'm so happy that you're updating that.
That's in a newspaper. We've got to find ways of, you know, creating some communication between the residents and the town. And right now, it's pretty limited.
And, and we have to figure out how to get people to the meetings.
I'm saying, ever, people are not going to go down there on a Saturday, okay? If it's April or June, they'll waste their day. I'm telling you right now.
All right, well, I hope you're wrong, David.
I, I wish I was.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just, I talk to these people, people just don't want to go.
Susan, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other, I, I think that wraps up. Roland?
I'd like to save my show for last.
Okay.
I'm too damn old, we're getting up and down, up and down. Roland, what else? Are we going to have an open town meeting? That was a non-binding poll that people voted on. So I'd like to hear from the selectmen. Are we going to have an open town meeting?
I, I think the select, let me jump in, you, you too. I think the selectmen have to take that issue up. We heard earlier from the warrant finance committee that they would like to combine the meeting for the school budget with the town. The school budget is typically done by ballot. That's my understanding, anyway, that they've been doing that by ballot. And so, I don't know how you combine those.
Well, the school used to have its meeting with the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?